Calling the special budget session to order and we'll start with our roll call. Deb, please.
Here.
Councilmember Dickey.
Yes.
Councilmember Brown.
Here.
Councilmember Yates.
President.
Vice Mayor Hanson.
Here.
Councilmember Elke.
Here.
And Councilwoman Legia is not here yet.
Here.
I'd like to make an entrance.
Discussion with possible direction related to the proposed town of Fountain Hills fiscal year 2014-15 budget, including all proposed revenues, expenditures, and programs for all governmental funds.
Mayor Kavanaugh, members of the council. Tonight in front of you is a required document or a process to start the budget, which is a Title IX of Arizona revised statutes. It's a policy statement outlining priorities for expenditures, needs of the community, proposed CIP, programs to be initiated, and the most importantly, the basic level of public services in which the citizens receive from their local government. Usually starts with what the mission, vision, and values are of the organization, and you have those in front of you. They're on the website. We use these to basically live by and operate the government by in Fountain Hills. You also have operational priorities that were given to the staff back in January. There were five of them that were narrowed down. The list is economic development plan implementation, the pavement management program expanded with asphalt replacement plan, Fire Station Two relocation, which is site yet to be determined, Fountain Lake, basically Fountain Lake water quality improvement project, and a facilities replacement capital fund to be developed. As I speak tonight on these, you'll see a number, if not all of these, within the budget. Strategic goals, obviously, the overriding goals of the community and where we should be going, and a framework and path, a focused area of where we should be going with those. There are nine strategic goals that were adopted this year to be reviewed. The economic development plan, again, the pavement management program, promote a mixed use of downtown core, promote business expansion and retention program, reliable source of funding for infrastructure maintenance, support community events, activities to build community and friendship, implement communication plans for civic involvement, evaluate customer service satisfaction on a regular basis, and communicate the role of local government. Again, those are ongoing and attempting to address each and every one of those as we The budget that's being proposed tonight is $44,807,389. That's a little bit more than what you've seen over the past five years, largely because you have capital that's what's been budgeted for in the last, at least the last two years that we'll get into in more depth tonight. Budget presentation, as I mentioned, we're going to talk about budget highlights, we're going to talk about our core services and their respective departmental budgets, capital improvement plan, fee schedule with some minor changes, recommended minor fee changes, debt overview, and personnel. Continued focus on the highlights is going to be a continued focus on adequate funding for core services with a structurally balanced budget. There were some public safety increases, increased costs this year, around $400,000. We have additional $34,000 in workers' comp, and that's experience rating premiums that were increases this year to us. We had originally budgeted $1,003,000 for the downtown median project. It came in at $1,005,000, so we adjusted the budget for those, for that project. We have an employee salary adjustment review and the amount of $6,800, and a recommended 2.5 merit increase in the amount of $58,658 for personnel. Again, there's a continued focus on street replacement, repair, and maintenance in the amount of about $12,960,000. When you talk about those, it's the Saguaro Boulevard project, it's the Shea Boulevard Street project, it's the signal light on Palisades and Saguaro, as well as vehicle license tax for pavement management plan for, start the accumulation of those funds for Zone One work to be done. Also, you can see that the affordable care, we have, because of the definition and requirements of that, it's about a $14,760 impact. We have some personnel that now qualify for those benefits. Workers' compensation, the experience modification rate was adjusted this year for us, and we believe that that's the Yarnell adjustment that happened to workers' comp this year, where everyone will end up having to pay those experience modification rate increases. Relocation of Fire Station Two is funded within the capital improvement program, $2.5 million. We have an implementation of the adopted economic development plan, again, and the professional services contract reduced 20% in general fund to accommodate for those public safety costs, facility replacement fund, and some employee salary market adjustments plus the 2.5 merit plan that's being recommended. As you can see, this is the breakout of the funds, budget summary. I won't go into that in depth, pretty self-explanatory as far as revenues, expenditures, and use of reserves within each of those funds. Some summary of the changes within this, again, is personnel dues and training. We have maintenance utilities, expenditure details, I'm sorry, personnel dues, training, maintenance utilities, contractual services, supplies, some capital expense from all funds, debt service and internal transfers that we have that are required. You'll see the changes, the percentage changes between last year and what's recommended for this year. The general fund itself, the council, again, there's a slight increase in adjustments there with the operations for that. We have general government, economic development, finance, H.R.I.T., there's actually a reduction of about a half a percent in that area. Court services, it's down about 24%. Development services, the town facilities, planned, planning, environment, engineering, it's up about 8.9%. Fire and emergency, I'm sorry, community services, recreation, culture, it's up about 6%. Fire and emergency is about 0.8%. Law enforcement is about 8.3 increase on that, so there's about a 3.8% in overall operating costs that's being proposed for this year. As you can see by the core services, you can see the public safety for the $44 million is 6.8 million. Administration is 2.4. Downtown Excise Economic Development Program is 2.2. Development Services 4.4. Community Services 2.3. Debt Services 2 million. Special Revenue Funds about 1,006,600. Capital is $22,775,000, and that's where the significant change is, is that last year was $19 million for that. So about a $3.5 million in that line alone, which shows the difference between last year's $41 million to this year's $44 million. Ginny.
Thank you, Ken. That one that you were just looking at, could you help explain the general fund of the 13 or so million, like, where is that in there? Because if you take away the capital, just sort of the usual way to look at it, you still end up with $22 million. Where would you say the general, is it kind of intermittent, or is it any four, or five, or six of those particular things?
Again, this is by all funds. This is just the general that shows you the total. But public safety, administration, portion of the economic development, development services, there's a portion of that, community services, the majority of that is general fund. Reserve funds, again, this is the money we have in the bank, $21,876,347. Now, that is a snapshot because that changes daily, money coming in, money being expended, but that's a snapshot as of March 31st. As you can see, 5.2 in general fund, highway users, about $400,000 is in the banks, downtown strategy funds, about 2.2 million, downtown economic development's $26,000, special revenue funds are about 260, debt services about $1,200. We have about $10,343 in capital project funds. We have some internal funds of $750,000, plus the rainy day fund that's required by our fiscal policy of $1,003,000, which totals out to the $21.8 million. As you can see, we have a number of funds that's either required by the generally accepted accounting principles or the Arizona Budget Laws. Everything from impact fees to general obligation debts, to the general fund, to public art fund, the economic development fund. You have a lot of those that are specialized, and they're special revenues that can only be spent within those funds. Again, our budget assumptions and what we're looking at in the future, today in the future is it's a new reality with our available funding. Revenue projections are determined using both trends analysis formula, as well as flat percentage of 2% across the board. Numbers, little change in distribution of state shared revenues that are given to us. Sustaining existing level of service, no new programs, no new, there's, I wouldn't say new employees, but we've moved, we're recommending that some part-time go full-time in this budget, and I'll explain later in the presentation. Inflation factor of 2% for administration, development services, community services, public safety contracts with MCSO is projected at 10% increase, and that was a pass-through to us this year due to some adjustments in their personnel last year at the Maricopa County. Also, there's a 3% for rural metro annually, the increase for that, as you can see, that's what makes up the $400,000 in that area between MCSO and rural metro. The TPT construction sales tax revenue are included in the projections. As you can see, we're holding our own in what our projections are for the next five years, that we still, I think those are all manageable with adjustments to make sure it's a balanced budget. And as you can see by the operational priority pavement management program, you can see where the funding comes from VLT currently, from that program. Last year, we actually used some capital improvement program money for the asphalt replacement portion of Zone Seven that we did. This year, it's only the VLT and a portion of the highway user funds to make the $1 million for the program. As you can see, we're still, the general fund and expenditures, we're on a little bit of a projected growth trend back up from what we can see up to fiscal year 19, 1920. And most important is the efficiency in government and cost comparisons per 1,000 citizens, and where Fountain Hill sits compared to Scottsdale, Goodyear, Paradise Valley, Tempe, Casperan, Mesa Surprise, Queen Creek, and Gilbert. The breakdown in the general fund on where we actually get our revenues, as you can see, the large purple is, or purple-blue is, 56% is local taxes, 34% is intergovernmental, which is the state shared revenue program. State gives us money based on our population counts. And then you have some minor areas of building revenue and permit license fees, 3% and 7% To talk a little bit more in-depth about the core services, start with the organizational chart, hasn't changed, pretty much stays intact. Public safety, again, this is the fire department and how it's organized. It's $3.4 million, $3,447,99. It's about 0.8 of a percent growth. There were some capital acquisitions last year with some self-contained breathing apparatus with that, plus we have a, we're still negotiating a two-year contract extension with rural metro. But the activities, again, is by the organizational chart, of fire suppression, fire prevention, emergency medical, building safety, and fires, building and safety fire review and care program. Ginny.
Thank you. Given that we haven't actually completed the work on the contract, do you anticipate us being able to do that before we actually settle on the budget?
Settle on the budget is tentative is Thursday. That's been calendared. I don't think that it will be, it won't be concluded by then, no. We had a draft that was sent to us last week that we're reviewing right now, as far as the extension language and the points that the council wanted to negotiate. And it also requires another IGA that's based off of the emergency medical transport, which isn't part of our contract, but there's some rent discussions and some other things that we're going through with it.
Then, Mayor, can, I mean, obviously, Thursday, we're going to be looking at a cap, but there's still amendments and things that can be done between then and when we actually do the budget in June, I would imagine.
You have a maximum, you have a maximum, you can't increase it from there.
Right. Okay, well, more questions later. Thanks.
Okay, so anyway, as I mentioned, we had some expenditures last year to buy new, to replace our self-contained breathing apparatus on the trucks, plus there's that 3% escalator that's in the contract of about $94,000 with it. Looking at it a different way, this is the breakout of administration, fire safety, emergency medical services, or paramedics, fire suppression and care programs. It's about, again, 0.8 of a percent increase. Law enforcement, again, here's how it's structured with District Seven, which we are a part of, we're contracted with MCSO. Again, there's a 10% increase in law enforcement personnel costs, about $302,000. There's 3.8 beats per school resource officer, plus a school resource officer. Increase in county benefits are passed on, as I mentioned, that's where the 302 comes from. Includes contract with county for animal control and jail fees, although we did adjust those this year after we went back and reviewed what those costs were and reduced those numbers to more manageable, more accurate number. Plus, there's $15,000 that's recommended for MCSO posse for vehicle maintenance and reimbursement costs.
Ken, can I ask you a question?
Mayor.
Concerning the school resource officer, have we always paid the full cost of having the resource officer at the school?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
As you can see in the law enforcement administration and animal control, you've seen an adjustment there from what we had previously budgeted. We went back and looked at our numbers and adjusted that downward to a more accurate number, as well as incarceration and transport numbers as well, and then the patrol, which is the 10.3%. So the overall is an 8.3% increase, as previously mentioned. Municipal courts, there's a decrease in the overall budget of about $87,000, new presiding judge, plus another relatively new position. Continued teen court program is still slated. How it's organized today, and how breakdown between administration, civil cases, criminal, juvenile, you can see the reduction, 24.1% overall.
Yes, sir. I don't see anybody from the courts here, unless I'm missing, oh, there he is. I was just curious if we can get an idea as to why such a dramatic decrease from 14, well, actually, 13, 14, 14, 12, 13, 13, 14, and now it's proposed.
The 24.1% is solely due to changes in personnel, between the full-time presiding judge changing to a part-time, and then the retirement of a court administrator at a higher pay scale, and that being reduced when I came on, is the question.
Mayor, I have a question also. We're not, it deals with revenues. I understand that there's a dip in revenues as far as the court is concerned as well. Are you able to speak to that at all?
I am. Largely, the revenue dip is due to action citations, and that's something that's out of the court's control. That's done by law enforcement and tau-coated enforcement officer. So all the revenues of the court rely on citations being issued, and this year, as we've seen over the past few years, there's been a reduction.
As I see from the revenues, Mayor Ken, we have 13, 14 at $246,420, and then projected revenues for 14, 15 is about $150,011 that's going to be attributed to the citations. It's not coming through that were before.
Correct, yeah. Over, since about 2008, 2009, there's a significant drop in the amount of citations being written. So that's directly correlated to how much revenue the court's bringing in.
Okay, thank you.
So, ahead, Vice Mayor.
So, maybe as long as we have a 10.3% increase in patrol cost, maybe we can look a little bit more strongly in the citations issue.
We used to have, I know we used to have one, and this might be more for the captain. We used to have one deputy that, I guess that beat is no longer with us, he used to do nothing but citations. You can, you can switch places.
Thank you.
Thank you, Key.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Before, I was actually up here in 2010, 2009, I believe, was the last year, we actually had a full-time motor officer that did, that's his sole job was traffic enforcement.
Right, and then when the contract was reduced and his position was eliminated, or what happened, we don't have him anymore?
I don't know exactly why it went away. I don't believe it was ever part of the contract, it was just an additional service that was being provided at that time.
Okay.
The entire program with the motor officers went away at that time, so they no longer had them countywide.
Okay. And I, you know, I recently attended the quarterly report that you gave, and you discussed the new regulations that might just temporarily cause this to go down while you understand exactly the new federal mandates. Maybe you could just speak briefly to that?
Yeah, there's, as you know, we're under a federal court order, and there's been several other changes over the, this is mainly the last six months or so, whether it's equipment, new computer systems, new data, new paperwork, new procedures that have all taken place up until this, actually, it's still ongoing right now. So we've seen a little dip overall, just because of so many changes, the adjustments that we're making. If we go back further and we look at the year, year, two years, three years, from, I judge it from 2009 after the motor officer was removed, because that was just a, that's a pretty drastic, it's a good resource to have, but it just, you know, he was responsible for just a lot of traffic citations. So we have seen that go down. As I mentioned in the community meeting that day, I would like to see that come back up. I'm not real pleased with the decline in that area. So we're looking at that, but I also don't want to, I'm not, I can't mandate a quota, I can't mandate how many tickets, you know, or base it on pure revenue, well, I'll never do that, and as, I know you don't either. But I do need to make sure that we're being productive in that area, more productive than we have been in the past, and, but I'm still giving the deputies the ability to make those decisions out on the street, whether they cite or warn. The one thing I didn't track, and is I need to go back to now, that we're able to track it with this new system, is actually what types of, that we're issuing warnings to see the actual overall number of traffic citations that are being made. Because the citations are going down doesn't necessarily mean the traffic stops are going down. It's just the end result is what we're seeing is not resulting in citations.
Okay. Do you have another question? Go ahead, Ann.
Captain, I want to be clear too, I certainly don't want to turn this into a police state or a police town, where every time you turn around a corner, there's a deputy there stopping someone. Certainly, we can look at special enforcement around schools and the areas where we have a lot of pedestrians. But I had heard something, and I just want to know if you can verify this, are deputies now working three 13-hour shifts?
Yes, they're actually on the road for 12 hours, and then the last hour and 20 minutes, technically, it's 13:20s. The last hour and 20 minutes is for administrative time, report writing, court time if needed. So they're actually on the road for 12 hours.
And just to be clear for anyone, three 13s or 12-hour, well, for three days a week, 13 hours and 20 minutes per shift, is that correct?
That's correct.
When did that change occur, Captain?
Actually, I believe it was right around '09, 2008, 2009, that we made that adjustment.
Right, and I have just some concerns, knowing myself as well, and working, if I were to work 12 hours straight or 13 hours straight, I have some concerns about the deputies and their, I guess their mental attentiveness after that, if anybody, I know we have great deputies in this town. Is there, was there a particular administrative decision that was made to do the three 13s, or how did that change come about?
It was, they took into consideration quite a few factors, including the current manpower that we had. Now, the thing about the contract up here is we're always fully staffed at whatever the contract calls for, but other areas of the county were being affected by shortages in manpower. There were vehicle issues as well, you have to, different shifts require you to have more vehicles, maybe if you have more people out. So just, they took a lot of that into consideration, and also the fact that from 2007 was the last time we had the raises, and that's what you see is the increase mainly, as a way to give the deputies, to retain them, was to say, well, we can't give you more money, but we're going to give you a shift that allows you to have four days off. And some of those deputies took advantage to go work off-duty jobs, two days, and they still had two days off. So kind of a, maybe a perk, I guess, that would, if that's a good way to put it.
Prior to that, Captain, was it four 10s that our deputies were working?
Four 10s was the shift, and then even prior to that, when I started my career, it was five 8s. So it's changed, over the course of the last 20 years, we've gone through all three.
Okay, thank you.
While you're here, can I ask you one question about the posse? Are they still doing transport?
The posse no longer has to do the transport full-time, only on occasion. The sheriff's office has added a service to us that's basically a jail wagon. So they come up here to us, now they send a van up to us on request.
Okay, because I remember those, 2 o'clock, 3 o'clock, Fred Horn runs transporting.
Yeah, there's now a jail transport on 24 hours a day, just for the east side of the county, and then there's also one on the west side, so we have two vans running all the time.
And I know that regularly, the posse still does the schools, because I always see them at the schools. Is there any other actual regular job that they do in town?
The priority is, the priority of staffing for them currently is the school patrols, and then they are also doing all of our patrol vacation watches.
Okay.
Throughout the, now, especially this time of year, they're going to start up again heavier.
And the wellness checks, do they still do those?
Do the wellness as well, same category.
Okay, all right. Any other questions while, okay, Councilwoman Dickey.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. This is not really for you, though. It's about the posse, actually, it's about the $15,000. During the presentation, there was a slide about the 20% for certain general fund services to be removed, and the reasons for that 20% were for the raises to staff, the facility replacement. for the raises to staff, the facility replacement that will hopefully get going, and then for public safety, and then the rise, the ten percent in the public safety of about three-hundred-thousand, whatever. So, at the time when we sent out letters to the various organizations and such that get general fund money, the posse received a letter, as these others entities did, to let them know that the twenty percent was in play for them, but it wasn't appearing on the budget as it has for the others. So, I wondered what was the reason. I know it's not a lot of money, but when you look in terms of that, the part of the reason of the twenty percent reduction was to pay for public safety, and in the interest of, I'm sure you've heard people that are a little upset about the food bank or whatever, to help show that this was done across the board in the way to pay for these three items, which I, you know, I'm not opposed to, but I wondered why when I saw the final numbers that it came up that this one, in fact, was not reduced, even though it would be only three thousand dollars.
That would be your?
Mayor Cavill, members of the council, it was just, it was a public safety function, and I recommended that it be fifteen thousand.
And this is still strictly for maintenance on their vehicles?
It's the same program.
Okay. Pretty much, the posse pays for everything else themselves. They pay for their uniforms, all their equipment.
Yes, the only thing the county can provide them is the fuel for the vehicles. That's the only thing we're able to do.
Okay, so.
And everything else is all either out of.
Weapons, everything that they buy, they buy themselves.
It's either through donation, or they fund it themselves, out of their own pocket. Yes.
And then the fifteen thousand strictly goes to the vehicles that they're using, maintenance?
Yes, I believe they have six, possibly seven now. I think they had a donation from a citizen here of a new vehicle, so they're up to maybe seven vehicles in their fleet. And that money is only used if they need it. So, if the vehicles don't have any major issues, then they may not use all that, but it's, you know, tires, maintenance, brakes, things like that to keep them on the road.
Okay, and I know I've spoken to several of them, just trying to get some costs and the cost of maintaining just their uniforms, their ammunition, their guns, everything else that they need is pretty expensive for them.
Yes. And you can see even in our budget this year, there was a slight, actually, the ammunition cost doubled. I believe it's six hundred and some dollars per deputy per year, and that same cost goes to the volunteers as well that are armed, because they have to do the same type of training that we do. So, it's approximately, that alone is six hundred dollars a year for them.
Okay. All right. I just wanted to be clear about what they can use this money for. Anything else?
Yes, Mayor, yes, just one other thing. The municipalities across the county who utilize the posse, do any of the cities supplement the posse with general fund taxpayer dollars?
From the best of my knowledge, this is the only incorporated city or town that actually uses the posse like they do. All the other posses are serving unincorporated areas.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else?
Ken, do you happen to know how much of that fifteen thousand was used in this fiscal budget year?
I'm going to say pretty close to all of it. I can't give you the exact number off the top of my head.
Okay. All right. And Captain, one last thing is, is there any discussion about going back to any four tens or anything like that for our town?
Not, not that we've had. The staffing study that was done, I believe it was two years ago, briefly mentioned it. The one thing that it would cause, I believe the county would have to do is, again, is it causes to purchase more vehicles and possibly add a little bit more manpower to do the way the shifts work out. So, it's a, it wasn't something at the time the county wanted to address.
How does that affect, if you know, and maybe it's better for someone else, how does that affect our contract as far as the costs if we're far beats or three-point-eight, three-point-eight per beat? And that, that would be whether it was four tens or three thirteens, it's the same number. Is that, is that accurate, Captain?
That's correct. You're getting the same bodies, basically, as you would. And, and law enforcement studies that you've done on shifts, ultimately, although even four tens sounds like a good shift, the ultimate shift to get the best coverage is that, is a five eight, you know, five, five days, eight hours a week, and that gives you, you know, the best coverage, the best production with that. But the off, just because of, you know, we're competing with other businesses and the private sector and the pay, and so this is a way of us being able to do something to give the employees a little better benefit.
And that being three on, four on?
Yes, correct.
Okay. Anything else from the captain? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Ken, you want to go on?
Administration, again, is broken down with town manager and information technology, town clerk, human resources, finance, economic development, legal services. For that number, it's about five-tenths of one percent. Decrease in overall, the town manager position holds many responsibilities in there. It's down about forty-one thousand from last year on that number. The IT is down about twenty-three thousand. The town clerk's budget is down nineteen thousand. The increases in human resources and in finance, human resources because we're taking that part-time position from the, back to a full-time position that would not only take care of employee policies and procedures and employee benefits, payroll compensation, loss control, risk management, employee relations, and employee training, but was also assist me with special projects. The, you also see in economic development's down a little bit from what was the previous year, and then legal services is up about thirteen thousand from last year, about three-hundred-and-twenty-seven-thousand. Yes, I'm sorry.
Sorry. I see you. Okay. Going back to the legal, I know later on in the budget, under the legal, it shows, you know, the change in the prosecutor and how that affected the budget, but it didn't address why the legal did go up.
We just adjusted it from what we were looking at and what we had in the previous years. We thought we needed to increase it thirteen thousand dollars, I believe. Yeah, thirteen-five.
And it's not a flat rate or anything. It's, it's used as it's needed. If it doesn't come out that much for the year, it doesn't come out that much for the year it's lost.
Okay, so it's allowing the flexibility. Are there more legal issues?
That's good. Okay.
Again, within administration, we have the food bank, and that's one of them that was recommended for twenty percent reduction. Plus, we also have the League of Cities dues that are in there, and we're asking for funding in there for towns, our website to be upgraded. As you can see by the organizational chart, if you'll notice, I just wanted to point something out. This shows as point one in your, in your binder, that's actually two-point-five positions in there, but it's actually one position is point, point one-oh, and those are two part-time As you can see by the breakdown, as I mentioned, there's the reductions in percentages or increases in what I just spelled out, so it's a point-five percent reduction in overall from previous year. Economic development, as you know, that the plan has been adopted, the plan implementation strategies have been reviewed and adopted to look well into the areas of focus right here, which are obviously retail, education, professional, technical, and scientific services, healthcare, medical, bioscience, wellness, finance, and insurance businesses, as well as tourism and recreation. Budget-wise, I kept the, it's recommended that I kept, we kept the same policy that of percentages of that excise tax as last year, which is forty percent for the downtown strategy, as you can see right here. And then you have the sixty percent, which is then split between tourism and business attraction, and business attraction has a transfer of general fund of ninety thousand, and that's been customary over the years. So, now you have the three strategies that make up the economic development plan for downtown is a hundred-and-seventeen thousand, tourism is a hundred-and-three, and business attraction is a hundred-and-one. Development services, again, it's pretty much in keeping what, with what we've, how we've been organized in the past. As you can see, it's two million and fourteen thousand, five-hundred-and-six dollars. It's up about eight-point-nine percent. To break that down a little bit more, again, with the responsibilities, everything from, you know, seven-hundred acres of wash maintenance to six dams that we have to watch after, the solid waste, administration of contracts, the town-owned buildings that we maintain with it, and the eight-hundred code enforcement cases that we do approximately every year.
Um, we have a, excuse me, we have a question.
Just a quick question for you, Ken. Sir, if we could just flip back two pages, just looking at some, under the tourism strategy, our GPEC dues of eleven thousand, two-hundred-and-eleven dollars?
Yes. It was an increase, but that number was, I guess, adjusted. They sent us another bill, and I think Scott Cooper has that latest one. He'd like to come up and tell you what that is. It's actually less than eleven thousand, but I didn't want to change that slide.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, the new adjusted amount is actually ten thousand and sixty-six dollars. It is an eighteen-hundred and twenty-two dollar increase over last year.
Anything specific for that decrease that you could point to?
It's based upon a number that was approved by their board, and it's based on per capita. So, it was just, it was based on our population numbers and the current numbers that they got and received, and it corrected down a little bit.
Yeah. We had a lengthy conversation during the last budget cycle about GPEC dues and what we're getting out of it, and I think we promised to revisit this when we came back around the next budget year. Can we point to anything specifically that we're getting out of GPEC?
Yeah, well, and I know it's a tough conversation, and every community, I think, revisits that often, but it's the first increase they've had, I believe, in ten, in ten years in a decade, and I believe in the previous three years consecutively, they've offered a fifteen percent discount towards municipalities to help. So, it is just a little bit of an increase over a decade. Specifically, based upon zip code commute patterns, there are seventy-seven jobs that have been created by, in the greater Phoenix area for Fountain Hills residents through GPEC locates. So, companies, they've actually located and brought to the greater Phoenix area. Seventy-seven of those people are actually residents of Fountain Hills, so there's a little bit of direct benefit there. I think the benefits that I receive in my position more often are, tend to be competitive intelligence and the use of their staff as an extension of mine and as an extension of our department to reach out is probably the greatest benefit. Things like CoStar and labor market analytics, real estate analytics, their impact model, sales missions and trade shows, those types of things, and marketing items, the things that we just can't do on my own, with our budget and our resources, to have them and to lean on them and to be able to utilize them is the greatest importance.
And I know there was some discussion last time, I think we had somebody from GPEC out here to talk about the leads that they're sending to us, and more often than not, and I haven't seen one in quite a while, because I know we were getting those forwarded to the mayor and council, but I think invariably, probably ninety-nine point nine percent of those leads, we didn't have the, we couldn't compete because we didn't have the space or we didn't have what was being sought.
That's true. In two thousand and fourteen alone, I believe, we had twenty-three leads that none of them met our requirements that we were able to respond to. That's not the case in years past. I was able to look up some, some information from even last year. There were a few that we were able to respond to, but not a large percentage, and that's why I say the largest benefit that we can get from them is to co-tail off of their marketing and their expertise.
Because I think for a long time until last year, when we started talking about this, we were just kind of forgotten about out here, and we were paying our dues dutifully, but I don't think there was much of a return from that. I know you're new to the position, and I certainly want you to have the tools that you need to make you successful and for the town to be successful. I just want to make sure we're getting the bang for the buck out of this, even though it's eleven, you know, ten thousand dollars, it's still ten thousand dollars.
Certainly. The, and the model that they put together, it, you know, our return is basically about six dollars of direct revenue for every one dollar invested in them. So, there's still, it's not sizable, but it's not a loss by any means. There are other communities whose ratio is considerably higher, but I believe there's still benefit there definitely. If there wasn't, I would say so, but I do believe in it, and I do believe in working with it, and the regional impact of it is important too, to Fountain Hills.
Thank you. Any other questions for Scott? Vice Mayor.
I guess along in this discussion too, I just, I weigh, you know, we look at the different things, the bullet points under the tourism strategy, and that's where the theater comes in. And I guess I just, I see the theater is bringing a bigger bang for the buck, you know, actually bringing people to town, so I have a little difficulty with, even though we may get a little benefit from GPEC, and, but we're decreasing the theater, and I have a couple of trouble with that.
Well, I attend all of the GPEC meetings, and I can assure you that what they're doing does affect us. I don't know if Scott's involved in their new velocity program, which is certainly not only going to benefit the higher education schools, but once this program goes into effect, it's going to affect our schools and bring up our science and math to the levels that the ASU and U of A are looking for, to have students that are more proficient in the STEM. So, they're not only looking at just locating companies here, their focus is also on bringing the education level up so that we can attract companies and have the labor force. You can't attract a company, and then they're looking for engineers, and we don't have the engineers. And then we have graduates who have then no place to get a job, and they're forced to leave Arizona. So, so they are working right now on this velocity program, and they have some huge corporate investors. So, I think that having a seat at the table, just like with MAG, even though we're a small part of MAG, keeps Fountain Hills in the loop and keeps us a part of the whole global strategy that they're initiating. And I think this is an excellent program that they're starting, and with the amount of big-money corporate people that are investing in this and the excitement that's going through ASU with the STEM program in the lower schools, I think we're all going to greatly benefit. And we might benefit anyway, but we're just paying a small part of getting the benefit in the long run. Yes, Councilwoman Yack?
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Scott, thank you. I'd like to chime in also. I'm a big GPEC supporter. I know our vast economic development department, just to hire a part-time person would far exceed this, so the information alone is invaluable. And I know that that, the equation that they give you as to how many people live in Fountain Hills that works at those companies, it's kind of a straight scale, and they kind of do a radius, and they just do on average. Truth be told, any of these businesses that open on the, on the East Valley, we're in that top-three spot. I'm sure it's way more than seven, seventy-seven residents that work at some of these businesses. In my, my other profession of being commercial real estate developer, I go to different municipalities and meet with their economic development group, and I call it a group because it really is, is directors, assistant directors, project managers, et cetera. Peoria is one of the municipalities that I'm working with, and we're kind of up against the wall. Any resource that we can give Scott to get that information bigger, better, faster, quicker, without spending a lot of money, this is one of those, one of those items. quicker, without spending a lot of money, this is one of those items, and I'd like to support him and obviously the town in our economic development needs as much as possible. I think this is a tremendous investment, so, thank you.
And Councilwoman Dickey?
Thank you, Mayor. In addition to the other items that are in our Economic Development Plan, there is an educational component that is listed and that we voted on and accepted, and given what you just said about, Mayor, about the GPEC, I wonder, they give us information, I'm assuming we give them information, some of the things we talked about, businesses that might be needed here, and we have an empty school here, and we have ideas for that school, and we also have a school district that has property that I have been unable to be able to get us to get into that game, even though it is in our Economic Development Policy Education, and while we're saying we have this and that storefront, we literally have a school where we have a school district that is also in the same position that many of us are, where you're so overwhelmed, you almost can't do the things that will actually help you not be overwhelmed, and this is one of those cases. And if GPEC indeed is looking at STEM, which is exactly what we were looking at, in addition to a college readiness school, I guess I would wonder if GPEC would, knows that we're in that business and would be aware of that, and that, again, I feel like I say things in front of the council so that it doesn't come as a surprise later, but this has been an ongoing resource, I think, that we have, that I've been unable to get fully examined, and yet I feel like it would fit exactly with what you just said. So I sure hope that if we stay members of GPEC, that we're able to use some of their help to get ourselves going with some of the resources that we have, but we don't have enough people or time or whatever to actually make these things come to fruition. It reminds me of a long time ago, I was applying for a job when I was a kid, and it's like they were so busy, they didn't have time to interview people. It's just like, you know, you can't get ahead until you do the things that will help you climb out of those, and it's not easy to do, and I'm not saying that it is, but I hope that GPEC then, and our own people, can help us examine some of these things that are potentials for success.
And we might, once this velocity program is completely finalized and they've got, you know, they've got all their corporate support, and they know exactly how they're going to implement it, perhaps we can invite them to a council meeting to do a presentation on it. I don't, this is a question for you, but do you have any idea if the school has made a decision about that building? I mean, I guess it's their building. Are they, does anyone know? Do they want to sell it? Do they want to?
I-
Do we have any idea what they want to do with it? I don't know if they've ever come out and said that, what they wanted, they just have a church in there right now, and that's it, right?
Yeah, I've not had a conversation with them about that, no.
I'd be interested to know if the-
Well, Mayor, and I guess that-
-the school wants to do with it.
Maybe what, speaking maybe sounding a little frustrating about this, but, you know, Councilwoman Elke and I did meet with the superintendent and the school board and people from ASU, and again, it's in play, they're obviously renting it to do what they can to use the building, but the actual, like, time it would take to do, you know, like Goodyear did or Mesa, where they actually say, "Look, we have a piece of property here," you know, "put it even out to the country for a college or for STEM school or for a college readiness school," it's, it seems like a waste to me, and if GPEC or if anybody can help get that out there, even put it in some kind of a publication where it's out there. We came very close this year to getting a bill passed that would afford, is going to force the school districts to sell their buildings to charter schools if they want it, like not let the taxpayers who pay for those buildings be able to have a hand, and what happens to them? That bill didn't go through, who knows, you know, next year? So some of these things start to drift away from us as opportunities. So again, I hope that GPEC and our own staff and our own intellect can get us ahead on this.
Mayor. Scott, just a quick question. When you started your presentation, you mentioned that there was a correlation between GPEC and seventy-seven Fountain Hills residents employment. Could you tell me a little more about that correlation?
It is, it's based upon GPEC-assisted locates. It's based on their figures that they provided us, based on their impact model, and they do, I believe, and I know you mentioned it as well, that they use a zip code commute patterns, and that there are seventy-seven people that live here in Fountain Hills employed by companies that GPEC assisted to locate to the Greater Phoenix area.
Okay, very good. And if you do the math, that's, we've paid a hundred and thirty dollars per person for that assist, so that's actually a pretty good return on investment, although I'm not a real fan of GPEC, that's about the only saving grace for me on that one, but that's not bad. It's a hundred and thirty, thirty dollars ROI, thank you.
All right.
I'll leave it at this. I mean, I think Fountain Hills is a very small fish in a very large pond, and our ten thousand dollars to GPEC, I don't think is going to make an effect one way or another as far as what they do. We've heard about they've got corporate sponsors and other monies from bigger cities and towns. In a situation in a budget where we're squeezing three thousand dollars potentially from policy for vehicle replacement, and we're squeezing twenty percent here, twenty percent there from other contracts, and we're giving GPEC ten thousand dollars, that money could be better used, as Councilmember Hanson mentioned, maybe perhaps the theater or somewhere else. Maybe we just put it back in the account, we keep it there. We just had this conversation last budget, and I still haven't seen anything over the past year that GPEC's done, over the past three years, that's been beneficial, and the only time they really came out to talk to us was when we started squawking about it and saying, "Hey, what are we getting from you guys?" And then they came out, and now we get a fifteen percent reduction. I assume the other cities and towns are getting that same fifteen percent reduction.
That reduction was over the previous three years.
Okay, so, all right. Again, I just think we could better spend that money somewhere else, and I don't think we're going to see a significant change one way or another as far as what we get from GPEC. Thank you.
Well, you're examining the economic impact of GPEC. Are you also giving us some sort of statistics on the economic impact of the other entities that are here under this category? We seem to be fixated on what GPEC is doing for us, but maybe we should know what kind of an impact if we want actual statistics that the others are giving us. Do we have any?
We haven't gotten in that depth. If you'd like to have that, we can try to get it for you, but that's going to be difficult.
Well, okay, because this is a very small amount compared to some of the others that we're overly concerned about, yet I do give economic updates every time I go to a meeting to let everyone know exactly what GPEC is doing, and I don't think that we can just, I mean, I'm no big fan of theirs. I've had lots of discussion with them about what we're getting in Fountain Hills, but we can't just always think we're just getting, a business is going to move here. That's just a small part of exactly what they do. I think there's lots of resources. But yes, I would like to, if we're going to examine in small detail the economic impact of GPEC, then I would want to know what the impact is on everything else that we're giving money, that we're giving money to.
Do we have a list?
Hmm? Excuse me?
I just think there's so many things in our budget, I don't want to waste staff time and energies, maybe if we provide them a list of all the ones that you would like them to go through.
I'm talking about the ones that are right here. We're talking about giving, we're giving thirty-five thousand for professional services to the theater. So what is the economic impact of them on us? What is the economic impact of us supporting, still continuing to support Jump Start Biz? I mean, if we're going to do one, we should be doing all of them, because that's where the money is going.
And we're giving thirty thousand dollars for Christmas lighting as well. I don't know how staff are going to do an economic impact on that, but-
I wasn't asking for an economic impact on Christmas lighting, I think that's a community event. I'm asking for what is under our tourism strategy, under tourism strategy.
Mayor?
Yes?
I wanted to ask maybe Cecil, the idea of somebody that's not a member of GPEC, is there a downside, or is it known, or how far does it go if you're not a member of GPEC? I mean, I think, I guess the only thing I can think of is kind of like MAG or the League, where if we weren't a member, it would really be in effect, you know, you would notice a difference. Has GPEC been around, and is it effective enough for that to have had a negative impact on us, or, you know, do you think we'd get blacklisted or whatever, that, you know, we wouldn't get information, or? I know it's hard, I know that you appreciate what they do, I have mixed feelings about them. I tend to think we should stay, you know, a member, just, but I really know what Tate's saying too, because we had this conversation last year, and we haven't really seen anything to convince us that anything has really improved that much. So what would you think about that?
Madam Mayor, and Scott, you can obviously talk to this also. I'm looking at it as a support tool for Scott's department. We're, Fountain Hills, we're targeting small businesses, which might not come via the GPEC route, but if ABC Company calls Scott, or let's not even call it ABC, CDF, CDE, they're a smaller one, and they're asking Scott some demographics, some price per square foot, some vacancy numbers, some traffic patterns, he can log on to some of these tools that GPEC has and has it readily available, whereas, you know, if we don't have this, that would be one more resource that we do not have, so that if it's a smaller company trying to decide between Fountain Hills and Mesa, or Fountain Hills and Scottsdale, he's going to have to take some more time out of his day in viewing that. As far as getting blackballed, Scott, you could probably speak more to that effect. I have mixed feelings about it. Everyone's going to know about who Fountain Hills is, but yes, they're going to, obviously GPEC are going to try to steer people in their members, but I don't think, Scott, you want to chime in?
You wouldn't be blackballed, I would. Yeah, I can't, I can't answer that. I've never been part of a community that decided to pull out of GPEC, so I really can't answer that. But to Councilmember Yates' thought, it's, and that's where I mentioned where sometimes the benefit, it's not what have you done, what have you brought to us? Sometimes it's what do you provide to us? It's like having a boat or a country club membership. Is it expensive if you never use it? Yeah, but that's not my intention, and my intention is to use their resources, and I think that if I do that properly, then we get our bang for our buck.
I think your correlation with MAG is right on, though, you know, we don't, no matter how many times they say, you know, "Where's our transportation, and we're not getting it," they did come out with those interactive maps that are going to be great for us to use. We could never put something like that together. You've already been using those. So we do get that kind of benefit from both of the organizations, but I guess GPEC's also started those community partnerships. Could you speak to that a little bit?
Yeah, well, I know that, I think right before I started here, Town Manager Ken Buchanan used, shared some time with GPEC staff, our Economic Development Plan, which they sat down, read, and my first couple of weeks when I started here in January, we met with them again, and we discussed our Economic Development Plan. They were familiar with it, they know what we're trying to do. They are reaching out and really trying to make a concerted effort with all their communities to understand what it is, what our plans say, what our implementation strategy is, how they may be able to help us, how they may be able to help us in marketing with what our strategies are aligning with their strategies. So I know they're reaching out in a much more concerted effort to understand what each community's goals and how they're planning to achieve those goals. So they're working hard towards that.
Okay, thanks. Any other questions? Councilwoman Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. I see, I see both sides of the conversation, but I would like to say that I think GPEC is a tool, and it may be the best tool we have that would attract, or at least find a new business that might fit Fountain Hills, and without them, we have nothing. I mean, we're just a town out here, it's sort of like fishing without a hook, in my opinion, so I would have to support leaving the ten thousand dollars. I see that as a very small amount for the amount of work I see they can do for us.
Anything else? Anything else? Okay, Ken? Thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
You can go on.
Again, Development Services, as you can see, is organized, pretty much the same. It's up about eight point nine percent. Those are some areas, it's just generally across the board, within engineering and facilities and planning and building safety and code compliance and mapping and graphics that address those areas.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Councilwoman Yates?
Ken, from a point of information, the uptick of fourteen point five in facilities, is that the R and R that we were kind of talking about, just general maintenance of the buildings and upkeep?
A portion of it.
Okay.
We have about a hundred and forty-six thousand that we've put into a replacement fund of, it's money that we've put into the general fund per the operational strategy priority that the council wanted to see, so we wanted to start accumulating the funds annually to put that in there.
Councilwoman Dickey?
Thank you. I think this one was before the one, the one that says Development Services, two million on the top. It might have been the one before this, yeah. So, you know what I'm going to say, stormwater. When we had our retreat, we talked about stormwater, quote, you know, slash whatever, environmental fees for revenue enhancements. We talked about some other cities that, you know, all the other cities do it, mom, but it's, but we came out of the retreat saying we want to examine this. We had the memo, and we agreed that we wanted to. And in the meantime, I did take a look at Mesa's, which is an environmental fee, and we could use it for alley paving, we could use it for the culvert work, you know, we've got, you know, it's like a one point five million dollar deal, and not to mention that, you know, the capital part, but we could use it for the, you know, just the regular administrative costs and the service costs and things like that. So we had this bill this year that was going, that did pass, and it appeared to sound like we couldn't do something like this, but it turns out it's not so much like that. We had this sort of final conference call this morning about it, and as long as something isn't based on a parcel, these types of fees are still viable, and, you know, remember when we talked about, what if you look at a big plan versus kind of something simple, and was this fee going to say, hey, you can't charge the engineering fees that you would have? It's turning out that that's not the case with this bill. I'm hoping that that's what it is. So it does look like those are still in play, and I know that staff hasn't had the chance to really go through this and check it. It was, you know, everybody's intention for that to happen, but it's really difficult to make that happen. So in general, with this budget, and when we decide on a cap or whatever you want to say, a maximum, I'm wondering how some of those discussions that we had to try to get some revenue into town to help offset public safety and all those things, as you can see that are going up in our seven million dollars of our pretty, you know, thirteen million dollar budget. So how can we possibly incorporate into the budget or into the cap that we may be doing on Thursday, the possibility of enacting or the policy decision to enact fees anywhere in this fiscal year? And it wasn't even just the stormwater fees, we also talked about, well, we had people writing us, asking us, "Would you consider any kind of fees for like the fares?" Or, I mean, in other words, there were a lot of things floating around, not that they were all something that we would do, but bottom line, is this budget going to have an ability for us in case we enact something like that over the next fiscal year? How can we, like we do with grants almost, is there something like that we can do that will make at least me feel better going forward, that there's still a possibility, or by passing this, we're saying, hey, this stuff is out for a year, don't even talk about it?
Mayor, Council, let me touch the first part of that, because there's really two statutes that are at issue. The one is House Bill 2378, which was passed last week, and basically what it says, retroactive to December thirty-one of two thousand and thirteen, is if you don't already have a statute, an ordinance in place that would, or be grandfathered, that a municipality cannot levy or assess a tax- would, or be grandfathered, that a municipality cannot levy or assess a tax, municipality-wide tax or fee against property owners for a service a municipality provides if it's based on the size or value of the property or improvements. So, you can do it on some other basis. You can levy it on a different basis, a flat fee or some other basis, but it can't be on the basis of the size or value of the property. So, that's how we design the mechanism issue. The other one is really the budget law. And what that simply, and you run into this every year, if you have potentially unknown revenues at this point, is to say, if we get those revenues in, will we be able to spend them? If you've left yourself budget cap room, yes, you will. But if you have revenues that are over top of your budget cap, unless you have a natural disaster or some of the exceptions to it, no, you cannot. So, I know that, and just looking through the budget this afternoon myself, there's a provision for miscellaneous grants, there's a provision for miscellaneous revenues. Ken, can you address what's in those or what? But there can be room left under the budget cap for revenues that you don't now have coming.
Ken?
Mayor?
Want to elaborate?
Members of the council, yes, there is capacity that we could talk about. My first concern with that, when we talked about it, was the legal concerns that we still hadn't, you know, hadn't had time to address with our town attorney. The second part of it is, is the collection process. How do you collect it? You know, depending on whether it's a $2 fee, $3, $5 fee, how do you collect it? You know, we talked about going to the water company and doing a contract with them, but how do you collect it? Because if they don't, if somebody doesn't pay it, they're not going to be the bill collectors for us for that, or even the sanitary district, be the same situation, or even our own process and how, what it would cost us just to send out the bills for a $5 a month collection fee, or annual fee, or semi-annual or quarterly fee. We'd have to look at that to find out how we could collect it. Then you've got to go out and run out and try to find, you know, try to go collect that type of a fee. We, it's going to be expensive to go out and run that, I can tell you, having run similar processes in the past. You have to have them accumulate so that they're worth going to collect before you do it, because it's going to be very expensive going to get a collection agency or whoever to go do what they need to do to go get that fee collected. And then you're going to end up not getting the full 100% of it, because usually you give a portion of it.
Okay.
So, there are some logistical issues. I know that we did have some preliminary work that staff did that looked at it. I know City of Mesa has one. City of Mesa also has a water company that they just put it on their bill, and it goes to every meter, is how that works. So, I mean, there's some challenges to this, as we discussed in that retreat.
Right, and I know we're talking about a fee, but in essence, it's a tax. We're talking about adding a tax to certain services. That's basically what you're saying.
Well, strictly speaking, a tax is something that is paid in general for general services. It's not in a exchange for a fee. So, you know, you pay taxes, you know, to the town of Fountain Hills, even if you don't set foot in the park, you're still paying for it. But if you get a fishing license, we're talking about fishing, then you're getting a fee, and that's a fee. That's not a tax. But I'm not here to debate a fee or a tax or anything else. What I'm asking is that if, as we go along the course of this year, which was, by the way, let's see, I2, Develop Reliable Funding Source for Infrastructure Maintenance Strategic Plan, accepted by and voted on by this council, if they decide to pursue that, is there a way, and it sounds like there is, some capacity in the budget for unseen revenue? How much and whatever, I don't know. I guess I haven't really seen that, but if you feel comfortable, Ken and, you know, Craig, that there's a possibility for something like that, another thing we talked about, if Rural Metro doesn't, if we don't do the contract for some reason, or somehow that relationship is different or changed, Ken was just talking about, you know, the transport, the ambulances, some other cities are looking at starting their own transports, which would be a revenue, that would bear revenue. So, in other words, this document shouldn't tire hands from doing things over the next year. So, how do you build something in there without it looking like a $60 million budget? That's all I'm asking, without talking about the merits of any of these things.
Again, as I mentioned, there's capacity in there for, of course, we don't know how much we're going to think, collect on this. I know there was a rough estimate of around $300,000 from staff in the initial review of that, but without further review on how to collect that, it's going to be, it's going to be a challenge. But there's capacity to answer your question.
Thank you. Anything else? Can we go on? Okay?
It's up to the council if you want to go on.
Yeah.
You tell me.
Saying there's nothing else, so let's go on.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry, are we doing this or not? No, that's fine. No, I don't, I'm just...
Again, I don't know if there's any questions regarding development services.
They can show that no one has anything else.
8.9% over the overalls. We're just, again, we're trying to provide the capacities of our core services that we provide to have them have sufficient revenues to conduct their services and that they're charged to do. Again, as I mentioned, the street fund, it's about 2.3. Again, we're looking at, you have a street division, it's about four, full-time equivalents, you got 336 lane miles of road, you got about 68 acres of medians, and we're looking at Zone 1 this year. We have to accumulate this money this go-around to do this. It's a monthly check we receive from the state for vehicle license tax to do the million-dollar maintenance. We are, have been charged with bringing, during this year, a capacity of the staff bringing back on asphalt replacement program. We need to bring some recommendations back to find out how we can at least start addressing that as well.
Vice Mayor?
Ken, at some point, would we take the median maintenance and put it in with parks? Didn't we redesignate those medians as a park? Wouldn't they...
Generally discussed, but it's still part of streets right now at this point. You're talking about the avenue of the Fountain, medians. We talked about those possibly moving over to parks. I know that Paul would love to give it to Mark, and they've had those general discussions over that, but...
Well, with all the work being done on it, it's really more of a park now than just a median.
Yeah, I know Paul would love to get to Mark, so we'll have that discussion.
Anything else? Okay, go on.
Again, Herfen Street operations, about down to 28%, because if you look at that middle of pavement management, we used CIP money last year to do asphalt replacement, which did some lane asphalt replacements on Fountain Hills Boulevard, but also out on Shea, so that was a long-term expenditure of that money. The rest of it was maintenance for it that we did in Zone 7, and that's the difference that we're having. So, it's still about a million dollars in pavement management that we're doing. You still have a million-dollar operation out there for those 156 miles of road, you know, 68 acres of medians that we take care of. Community Services, again, as you can see, it's budgeted in the organizational chart in which it hasn't changed significantly on any area. To note, it's up 6%. That's largely, we have some areas in there for maintenance and repair utilities, some contractual services, and some equipment purchases that we have in there that's needed within the operations. Also, as you can see, that, you know, we also, the tourism program went back over, and we've had it for four months with the program. In community services, we have about 116 acres of park to take care of, 740 acre preserve, over 10 miles of trails, recreation programs for all ages, additional recreation professional services that we contract for with Boys and Girls Club, the youth art and culture with the theater, and we also have the community center bond payment that we make. We're also resurfacing the tennis courts and the pickleball courts this year that are in need to be done. This is part of that 20% reduction in those two, for Boys and Girls Club and the theater, part of the general fund part of that side.
Mayor?
If I may, please. Ken, do we have a number for the resurfacing town tennis and pickleball courts? I noticed there's no number there. Do we have an idea what that's going to cost us?
Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, councilmembers. Yeah, we are, I think it's 16,000 that we're spending over at Golden Eagle for, to resurface the tennis courts that we have there and the pickleball courts, and then also at Four Peaks, we're also spending another 14,000 if I'm not mistaken. Let me take a quick look here. Volleyball tennis courts. I highlighted a couple of the major projects or the major maintenance that we were doing, and it'll take me a second or two here to find it. My glasses are up in the office there. Total relamp, 2,200. Tennis courts. Get in the right order if I can. FP, GPL.
I believe we have a piece of equipment for Golden Eagle.
Yeah, that's also, that's 16,000 for the mower. That's one of the ones I do have highlighted there. That one's, I'm skipping past it. I see the, we're looking to get a Kubota, new mower for the, to mow the ball fields, which I have highlighted at 16,000. And, give me a second here, I'll find it in there. I'm just a little bit unorganized on this one.
Well, that's fine. I think you, basically, are you looking at your line item budget there?
Yes, I am.
Okay, I just want to make sure it was in the budget, in that it was blank on the presentation.
Yeah, it's basically, I think it's 16,000, about...
I have about 30 from the figures that you put out there.
30?
You had two different locations. You mentioned two line items.
That's accurate.
Yes, I have, like I said, at Four Peaks, we are resurfacing the courts there, and I don't, I can't pull out the exact amount right now, but I'm pretty sure...
That's fine. My main concern was it was blank here. I just want to make sure it was in line item budget, and it is, so thank you for considering that question. Thank you.
Okay.
While you're here, can I ask you a question about the dog park?
Sure.
I get a lot of people that use the dog park, and they always ask me, what exactly is the town's responsibility? And I guess when it first started, that the, at the ADOG at that time was helping out raise some funds?
Yes.
How does that work right now? Just...
Mayor, councilmembers, they do assist us when we run short on funds, especially like at the end of the year, if we need an additional, I think it's about $1,600 that we would use to purchase the pet waste bags. We get it from Associated Bag. And we would go, we would talk to the leader of ADOG and ask them to assist us. They sometimes pay for half of it, or sometimes they'll pay for all of it.
Okay, okay. I was just interested in that there were still kind of partners in it, because I get that question a lot about whether we are totally taking care of the park. I know they've done a lot to raise money in the past for that park.
We have had offers from them, even this year, while they, like I said, they've offered to help us if we run short on the money to purchase the pet waste bags, and also with the turf maintenance fertilizer, any of those needs that we need money for.
Good, okay. Any other questions? Yes, Vice Mayor?
ADOG is not as active as it once was. They were more proactively having fundraisers and things, which has really been curtailed, so I don't think their contribution, like in the past when they contributed to the lights, that was a very large contribution.
Yes, they did.
That's, it's changed quite a bit.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, any other questions for Don? No?
Sorry, I didn't have that information.
No, no, no. Oh, wait, you know what? I have one more question.
Sure.
If you can stand a question about coots.
Go right ahead.
Like, I get more coot questions than probably anything else.
Uh-huh.
I know we had talked about maybe at one time having something where, since we are very short on staff, something that you could ride and wash down the sidewalks a little bit.
We actually, Mayor, we actually use the tenant sweeper, the old one that we used to have at Golden Eagle Park. We've transferred it over to Fountain Park to assist with trying to keep the walkways clean. It doesn't actually wash it, it just sweeps it, so it's not as effective as we'd like it to be, but we also water the, try to water the turf as often as possible with that, the water from that, it helps to clean the sidewalks off, so...
Okay.
We're still kind of looking at that. We may also look at getting a power washer if that's possible.
Okay, well, that's good to know. Something I can tell the people next winter.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Anything else for Don? Okay. And Ken? Go ahead.
Again, the breakdown of the four different areas within community services, recreation parks, community center operations, and senior services. As you can see, there's increases that make up the 6%. Largely, it's a lot of us backfilling the operational costs that we've had, that we had in the past, that we're just trying to refill in our core services.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Councilman Yates.
Ken, with regard to the operations of the community center, as you know, we're selling space, events, et cetera. Where does that revenue show up? I know this is just strictly on what we budgeted, but I know at one point we were showing...
It comes as a general revenue source.
Say that?
It comes as a general revenue source, in the general fund.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Capital Improvement Plan, again, last year was 19 million. This year, it's planned for 22,237,928. That makes up a number of projects. One of them, obviously, is pavement management. Again, we're getting into Zone 1, which is our, one of our oldest neighborhoods, and some of our oldest asphalt, and we're finding that we have to look at some replacement in there. It's, we hoped that we, it was going to look at two years, we're probably going to be looking more like a three-year program for that now, because of the Glenbrook, sorry, Glenbrook, say that three times, Glenbrook, El Pueblo and Grande streets that are need, are need for replacement. Again, in Zone 1 alone, it's 712,000 square yards of asphalt with that. Right now, we've estimated about 73 pavement locations of about 19,000 square yards of asphalt replacement, but that's going to increase because of those, that area that's, those areas that are beyond maintenance and need replacing. As you can see by the list that you have in your handouts, of all the projects that are either through intergovernmental agreements or CIP funds that we have out of that 10 million that I mentioned previously, and/or potential grants that are within the project for various, for a number of these projects. And as I said before, is that there's a number of them that we have for everything from downtown to Fountain Medians, as you saw in there, the Fire Station 2, we're looking at some radios for the firefighters, the civic center improvements that are there, the Fountain Park improvements, the quality, the lake quality improvements that we're looking at that we've saved money for to look at the water quality within the lake itself. Some urban trail again, program, and I believe that that's for the third phase, Mark? That's the third trail. Unpaved alley paving project, the Shea-Saguaro, as I mentioned, the downtown sidewalk project that's going forward, the Suaro Bond, which is going forward, as well as the signal light that goes with that, too. Shoulder paving project that's out on Fountain Hills Boulevard, that's mostly grant, Highway Safety Improvement Grant, plus Shea Eastbound Bike Lane that we're working through on that as well, plus there's some contingency that's within the CIP. That's what totals the 22 million.
Question? The urban trails, number two was the Falcon Trail, so is that complete?
Yes.
It is complete. And it's just not signed yet, is that it, or...
It's been signed.
It's signed, okay. All right, good. All right, go on.
Question?
Oh, I'm sorry. Councilman Brown?
Thank you. This would be for Ken. Ken, 22,237,928 is a lot, a lot... is a lot, a lot of work for the size of staff that we currently have in development services and parks. That's the majority of what I see going on. Are there any plans in trying to bring on some support for these people? Part-time?
Mayor, members of the council, we do use in a number of these, these are consultant contracts that we do bring on, that's either going to design it or project manage, those like we were with Saworo, and hopefully with Shea, and doing the same actually with Shea. Are we going to look at a contract for that? We're looking at a contract to administer that, too.
And they will manage their own work, or will the town?
We'll oversee with them.
With them?
Oversee, yes, watching the day-to-day.
And currently, we have one inspector for the development services, Justin?
Yes.
Are you?
But again, they're going to have, there's going to be an oversee, and they'll be doing the construction inspection on that as well.
And your staff is comfortable with that? Pretty much, okay. Thank you.
That's what staff proposed to me, and I agree with them. That's a customary project, is that you usually bring on, obviously, you have the design engineers, but you also bring on a construction administrator to make sure that the project's overseen of the contractor, whoever gets the award.
Understood. I just wondered if we were going to bring on any new staff, sort of just watch after our own dollars?
Not full-time.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Councilor Nelke has a question for you.
Ken, we have, and I want to commend you again for getting the million dollars for our pavement replacement, correct? Replacement plan?
No, this is maintenance. It's a million.
Maintenance, excuse me. So we need to, and I understand you're looking for the pavement replacement plan, that's going to be something for further discussion.
As we discussed in January at a planning retreat, again, there's always been two parts to the pavement management plan. We need to come back with how we can try to fund it. We have some, within existing, we have some existing funds that could, that's currently paying for debt service that we could talk about in the future, and using that when it comes available, to maybe transfer over and use it as replacement.
And would it be helpful to use basically the same fund, replacement and repair, as far as the funds that we have allocated now for replacement, using a similar fund to draw from in the future, when we get the revenue source to pour into that as well?
Yes. And again, a lot of that with replacement's going to be the arterials and major collectors, and again, that's going to be doing what we did with Saworo, we're going to be looking at bond programs, too, to help supplement that.
Okay, thanks.
Madam Mayor.
Anything else?
To Councilmember Nelke's point, you're saying when those bonds retire, we might be able to roll that over, or we'd still have to present it to the voters again, but it would be both the maintenance and the... Go ahead, I'm sorry.
There, you have some MPC bonds that we have to pay out of our existing base, out of our general fund monies, and we could use that, hopefully, that once those bonds are redeemed, we can use that money to move over to a replacement fund. It's not a GO bond. It's actually our general fund money. So, well, it's actually just general revenue, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else?
And there's a potential for another, I'm sorry, if you remember in January, we talked about a potential, talking about some other sales tax. Right now, we have a little bit of capacity that we might want to talk about a tenth of a percent, or two tenths of a percent, that would go to that as well. That's for future discussion, as we talked about in January.
Okay, Ken, go on.
There's some minor changes in our fee schedule. As you can see, that we have a, there's a sample permit fee that we want to, that we'd like to increase, it's zero today because it costs us money, and we're asking for twenty-five dollars, and that's actually when grocery stores ask for wine tasting, sampling fees, and the liquor license, and it costs us money to process those. We want a fee that needs to be done for that, otherwise it costs the general taxpayer monies for those events to occur. Also, we're looking at copies, that anyone asks us sometimes a copy for twenty-four by thirty-six. We weren't charging anything, we needed to have some fees that were either black and white or color on those, because it costs us money as well. And the notification fee, we had some increases in that, and we needed an increase for our newspaper postings, plus wire transfer fees. There's another one that was costing us, and that we wanted to have those pass-throughs when those wire transfers come through us. Again, debt overview, seven million, two-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand is what we still have outstanding. That does not include Saworo. Saworo won't be put on until next year, because we haven't sold the bonds yet, bonds won't be sold until we know what the contract price is going to be, but it will be tacked on for next year.
Councilwoman Dickey?
Just to point out, the Eagle Mountain one is a, kind of a pass-through thing, just to...
I'm sorry. Yes, good point that you brought out. Eagle Mountain is a, is a community facilities district, and that's just a pass-through. Those property owners are responsible for their own, on that. There is no, there is no burden to the general taxpayer for that. Personnel, again, about fifty-two, full-time equivalent. There's a couple of things that I wanted to point out, is that it's about a five-point-four percent increase from last year. Last year was three-point-five, this year's about three-point-seven. We have, we did some market adjustments that affected about five positions to about sixty-eight-hundred bucks. A two-point-five merit increase that is being recommended, which totals up about fifty-six, I'm sorry, fifty-eight thousand for that, so it, plus, to go to the next slide to show, is that I'm looking for two part-times to go to full-time. One of them is the volunteer coordinator, again, with twenty-six volunteer programs and seven-hundred volunteers, and counting. We always have trouble about her weekly, her weekly hours, and it's just a bear to keep that, because she does work irregular hours most of the time, so it's easier, it's more cost-effective for that to go full-time, where it probably should have been done a while back. The salary, as I mentioned, that's there, plus I'm looking at the HR position, going to HR Director, which will do all the HR and risk management and loss control, but also do special, assist me with special projects for that, with the retirement that's going to occur in June.
Madam Mayor.
Councilman Nelke?
Thank you. We tend to talk about the budgeting, or the salary increases, or the merit increases every year, and I'd like to, maybe we can talk a little bit about that, and see if anybody has any heartburn. I know in the past, we've talked across the board, a percent increase across the board, a two-point-five merit increase here, fifty-eight thousand, six fifty-eight. I certainly think where we go, fifty-two employees, where once we had, you know, not too long ago, we had eighty-eight, and I think they're doing a good job, so I'd certainly be in favor of an increase, but I just want to see if we can flesh this out a little bit. Everybody's kind of remaining silent, and this is usually kind of a hot issue, or more disgust, I should say, maybe not a hot issue, but it's more disgust.
Madam Mayor.
Councilman Yanks?
Well-deserved, well-needed. I, not that I'm chiming in, I didn't think this was an issue of contention at all, because I know we went several years without any increase, and the short time I've been on council, it's amazing, if certain employees are absent, sometimes the phone doesn't ring because it's a one-person show, so I really don't think this is an issue of contention, but I'll...
Anyone else? Councilman Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. As every year, when we start talking about the pay increases for the employees, I have been pretty solid in the statement that we've got fewer employees doing more work every day, and that if I understand you would like to eliminate the merit aspect of this two-point-five percent raise, and I have to concur with that a hundred percent. I think it should be an across-the-board raise for the employees that have weathered the storm with us and shouldered the burden.
Councilwoman Dickey?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilman Brown, that was the same question that I asked, because when I saw merit, but it seemed that it was actually, was across the board, except for a few that would bring over their max in their range. So I'm a little confused about the terminology, and I know Ken wrote me back, but I still didn't quite get it, when it's everybody getting the same, except for the ones that will bring over the cap, it does seem more like an across-the-board rather than a merit. So I just wanted to make sure all the individual people who can will be getting a two-point-five.
Ken, you want to explain?
To answer that, yes, that's the issue. It's a COLA, first of all, every position has a range, okay, from minimum to maximum on what the position is worth, basically, okay? Within that, you can give merit percentages to continually raise that. Now, usually, they used to do steps and ranges on that. We don't, we just have a range in there, and whatever we can afford, we give what is available. Now, when people hit that max out there, they're no longer available, because that's what that position's worth, okay? I mean, I can't say it any other way. So there's a couple of positions that are actually maxed out right now, and if you give a COLA, you give up above, you're giving up above what that position's worth on it, as compared, because we market, and we do a market analysis, and we need to be doing a market analysis every year from here on, because our competition is out there doing the same thing. I mean, we just saw, we've experienced some of that, and we're going to continue. It's going to be, it's going to be very competitive, and we want to maintain a good staff, which we have, the trick is maintaining it, and that's the way we can try to continue to do this.
And, Mayor, and Ken, this is more of a COLA, except for those few people, so I think that answers what you were saying.
Yes.
And just to be real clear, Ken, then, the intent then would be that everybody that is eligible, that wouldn't, that's not maxed out, would receive that two-point-five percent increase?
Two-point-five, nothing in between, two-point-five.
Okay.
If they're eligible, they get, and if they get a successful evaluation, it's two-point-five.
Okay.
Mayor.
Not up to.
I'm sorry.
Because, you know, that's been in the past, it's been discussion here in the line of my, it's my third budget, and we've had this our third discussion about it, is that, well, we're only going to give up to maybe one percent of that two-point-five to this per, no, it's two-point-five. You meet your, you meet your evaluation, you get your two-point-five.
Good.
Mayor, if I may, yes. This is very academic, but I think the confusion stems from the word merit, so I would highly recommend we take the word merit out, because merit implies from an HR perspective that it's performance-based, and I think that's where we get wrapped around the axle, so I think if it reads two-point-five percent increase, with the exceptions you mentioned, and I know I'm splitting hairs, but it's just, it's just a recommendation, do what you want with it.
Mayor, Mr. Council, it is a merit. It is performance-based. It's based on your evaluation. On a good job that you're doing, you're going to get your merit within that range. That's what a merit is. Everyone else does those that way.
You just said within that range, zero...
Salary range.
Zero...
Salary range. Minimum, maximum salary range, as I mentioned before.
If staff are evaluating, someone gets a poor evaluation, and someone gets an excellent evaluation, in a merit system, typically that means that the person doing great gets the high end, and the person not doing so great gets the low end. I mean, that's, that's, that's a merit increase, and as, so, it sounds like we understand what we're doing here. I think that's what causes the confusion.
In the public sector, you don't necessarily, some people, some, I've heard of some practice that. I've never practiced that. You look at a flat merit, because you do have your steps. Sometimes they're two and a half, sometimes they're three, sometimes they're four or five. Just depends on, and how many, how many the range is, could be fourteen steps in it. I've seen them, I came from an organization that had fourteen steps to it, minimum, maximum of that position. That's what it's worth.
So it sounds like everyone's getting a two-point-five percent increase regardless of performance?
No, that's not what I said. I said, based on a value, successful evaluation.
What if they have a poor evaluation?
Then they don't get it.
Okay, well, that's different now.
What did I say? I said, performance. It's what a merit is in the public sector.
Okay, you all understand? No?
Not yet?
I guess I don't.
It's not a COLA.
Because I thought everybody was getting the two-point-five.
It's not a cost-of-living adjustment.
Then everyone's not getting it, which is what we keep saying. We keep saying everyone's getting it, but now we're saying it's based on performance, and not everyone's getting it. I think some of the people up here are under the impression that regardless of the performance, everyone will get a two-point-five. At least that's what I'm hearing, because of our workload, and so forth and so on. I'm not, I'm not stating a position one way or the other, it's just that we're, it seems like there's still some confusion.
Mayor, maybe we can make them, are we making motions, or not?
How about I finish the proposal, my presentation first, and then we can open everything up for motions to adjust anything of what I recommend.
Sounds like a plan.
Okay, I better write it down.
Okay. Go on.
I'm done.
You're done.
Just, there's two resolutions after, you have a Thursday, that we're supposed to be talking about setting the maximum or the tentative budget, but then we're going to go through a number of processes. We have both the Eagle Mountain CFD and the Cottonwood Maintenance District, and we have a lot of publications that we've got to do, and then we'll go into the final, and then we have to do a setting of the tax levies. So there's a whole lot of processes that we've got to go between now and a final budget adoption, and then after final budget adoption, we adopt a tax levy, and go through truth and taxation, public hearing for that as well. Again, lastly, it's my recommendation, forty-four million, eight-hundred-seven thousand, three-hundred-and-eighty-nine dollars.
All right. That's it? Any questions? Questions? Any other questions?
No question.
Madam Mayor.
Yes. Councilman Yanks?
Ken, the hundred-three-thousand-dollar budget for the tourism, which includes a website and the operations, with the recent changes, the goal is to hire a assistant and keep business as usual?
We had an intern, but that'll be a part-time position, to totally maintain that, as well as help function with all the tourism activities that's been planned. That was proposed.
But again, the plan is to maintain the existing, to roll that over. The first thing we did is, once we received it back from the chamber, was to just run it in-house. You're now proposing to maintain it in-house under the same...
Yes.
...terms and conditions.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yes.
Go ahead, questions? Councilman Nelke?
Thank you. Hey, Ken, can you refresh my memory? What was the, did we have an increase last year in salary, whether merit or across the board, for employees?
Two percent.
Was it two percent last year?
It was a COLA. Two and a half.
Two and a half last year?
Yes.
How about the year before?
Zero.
One.
One.
So it was one?
Three years before.
Was it zero the year before that?
Three years.
Okay, thanks.
Anything else?
Mayor, are you waiting for any kind of a motion on the whole budget before we would do anything else?
Uh, no, I don't think I am. We're just, unless someone wants a particular motion.
Well, I could make a motion about this salary thing, and it won't be an amendment, because nobody's made an motion yet, so I guess I could do that.
It's open for discussion. Again, you have, you have a recommendation. If you want to make adjustments, now's the time, I would recommend doing that, because that's what the next two meetings are scheduled for, if necessary. If we need to come back and make adjustments, we need to come back and show those, so that you can get ready for an adoption of the maximum amounts for the tentative budget Thursday.
So are we still talking about the merit? Is that...
Yeah, because I was thinking, if we do this, then, and whatever other things that people want to make motions about, then maybe we can make a motion to accept that with the, you know, as per the discussion, or something like that. I don't know, tell me what to do.
How was the, how was the raise handled last budget? Was it the same way?
If the council wants adjustments in that, they need to tell me now, because I need to bring those adjustments back to you.
No, my question is, how was the salary increase handled last budget? Was it this merit, the two-point-five percent merit? I think everybody's just a little confused about the merit versus across the board. Oh, thank you.
Mayor and councilmembers, the current fiscal year for thirteen fourteen, we had a one percent COLA, cost-of-living, effective on July first, across the board. Every employee got that. And then at their evaluation time, which happens once a year on their anniversary date, they received a one and a half percent increase, so that totaled the two and a half percent. I think what's being recommended for this next fiscal year is a flat two and a half percent at the evaluation time. So nothing would be granted July first, it would only be granted at their anniversary date during the year.
Is that...
Yes.
Can we just add something based on performance? Just putting that...
That's...
Well, is it, it's based on performance?
That's what a merit increase is versus the COLA. COLA is cost-of-living increase, but that second bump that they got on their, excuse me, Mayor, that they got on their...
We're all trying to understand.
On their evaluation date, was that a second COLA or was that a merit increase?
Well, it was called the merit increase, but in the HR world, a merit increase is based on performance. So maybe the council would feel more comfortable if we just called it a wage adjustment. It's not really tied to the cost of living, because obviously, the cost of living is higher than that, but we could call it a wage adjustment if the council was more comfortable with that.
Okay. Councilwoman Dickey?
Well, I would move to make the wording in this, move to increase employees' pay across the board in the amount of 2.5%, except the town manager and those who, this would raise their salary above the maximum for their range.
Second?
I have a second.
Okay. Discussion?
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I'm sorry. Councilmember Ligier?
Yeah, so as I understand the motion, then it's a 2.5% across the board for everyone except for those that would peak above the amount in the town manager. Okay.
That's, I'm...
No, go ahead.
That's not what I'm hearing. I'm hearing everyone. If you do a wage adjustment, everyone gets it.
Well, that's...
But my position, and that's what I think the motion was for.
That was the motion, I believe.
Is that what your intention is with your motion, that it's a 2.5% for everyone?
Yes.
For everyone.
Not relying on their, on merit. I mean, I guess...
Not relying on evaluation, is that what you mean?
Right, just across, this $58,658 would reflect everybody getting a 2.5% raise, except the town manager and those who would put above their cap. So that's the amount, and I'm just saying, let's go with it.
Okay. Councilman Yates?
Joe, last year, the second evaluation merit, how many, off the top of your head, did anyone not receive that?
No, everyone received the 1.5.
So even though we call it the merit increase, and it was administered as such, based on evaluation, all of our staff got it anyway.
Yeah, exactly. And I think that, you know, if anybody is performing that poorly, that they don't deserve a 1.5% increase, they shouldn't be here in the first place. So I think that's what we're, how we're thinking.
Yeah. Okay. Councilman Elke?
With respect, I think I saw some head shaking behind you, Ms. McIntosh, regarding, everybody in every department got the 1.5%?
Yes, unless they were at their maximum.
I see.
You know, unless they were at their maximum of the current salary range. And that's in our employee manual and the policy, that you can't go above that, whether it's a COLA or a merit, the maximum's the maximum. Until the new pay plan for the next year, then that maximum might increase, depending on the pay plan.
Yeah, I would move to amend the motion that we did, what we did last year, where it was a 1% across the board and a 1.5% merit-based. I want to give, I think it's appropriate to give staff and the department heads the authority. I mean, it sounds like everybody got it anyway, and they can appreciate, but I think to give them the authority to make that decision, I mean, we're just saying everybody should get it, and I don't know if everybody in every department's doing a fantastic job or is the best they can. Maybe they are, and it sounds like they were, but I'd rather leave it in the department heads' hands. So that's my motion.
All right, I have an amendment. Anyone want to second the amendment to the motion?
Second.
All right, then we'll have a discussion on the amendment.
Mayor, yes. The fact that you just said the cost of living is 3% doesn't, makes me feel fine by saying 2.5% for everybody.
So you're still supporting your original motion? Okay. I need a discussion on the amendment. If not, we'll have a vote on the amendment. Roll call.
Councilmember Yates?
So it's 1%, no matter what, and then 1.5% on their, as a merit?
Or the original amendment is 2.5%.
That's what we did last year.
Or the 2, that's your two choices.
Or the 2.5.
Or the 2.5. You go first.
I'll say aye.
Vice Mayor Hanson?
Aye.
Councilmember Ligier?
Aye.
Councilmember Dickey?
Nay.
Councilmember Elke?
Aye.
Councilmember Brown?
Nay.
And Mayor Kavanaugh? Nay. Mayor 4-3? Okay, so, Mayor, so everybody's getting the 1, and then not everybody's getting the 1.5, right? Okay.
Based on precedence, everyone's going to get...
Everybody's going to get 2.5% anyway.
And cost of living is 3%.
Okay. Okay. All right, any other discussion?
Madam Mayor.
Yes, more?
Ken, with regard to economic development, the department, I know we have a part-time person, was it given any thought about additional help or full-time or...
Yes, but I was hoping to give it a little bit of evaluation period, so that we can get, find out if we're going to be heading down the same road and maybe talk about it mid-year.
Okay.
Anything else? Councilwoman Dickey?
Well, I'll make everybody mad, but I think to reflect the 20% general fund reduction to the food bank and the other entities, and the fact that it's being used to offset raises, raises that we just did, facility replacement, and mostly public safety with a $300,000 increase, I would move to amend the general funding of the posse from $15,000 to $12,000 for this year.
Is there a second?
Surprise. Well, tell Barbara I tried.
Dice for lack of a second. Anyone else want to entertain any motions or... Yes, question?
On page 74 in the budget section, it refers to the proposed downtown strategy budget includes an expenditure of $1.7 million for improvements to the downtown medians. And I was a little confused with that dollar amount, as it appeared at 1.5.
That was the original number that we had budgeted, if you remember, and then we talked about, that was the original, original number. If we talked early on, it was a million seven. We've come a long road coming back to the million five, I'm sorry, to the million three, and now we awarded it to million five. That will be adjusted, and I'm sorry that we didn't make adjustments into the large document, but we wouldn't have been able to get that done before tonight.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, good point that you brought out.
Anything else?
Mayor, if I may.
Can we, Councilman Ligier?
Just a comment, just a comment. I've, this is my eighth budget that I've taken a look at, and I'd simply like to commend staff for just an excellent job. I mean, you know, you receive this book in your mailbox, and you say, okay, here we go, you know, it's a journey. And it was very clear, it was very concise, it was very well done. Being able to just look at the PowerPoint presentation and have an understanding of the entire budget is a good thing. And of course, our ability to drill down on line item budget, so very nice job, Ken, to you and your staff, and Greg, and Julie, wherever you are. Thank you.
Just another quick question. On page 106 in the budget document, it shows the art acquisition and maintenance jumping from $7,700 to $45,688, and I just wondered what that was.
What page is that? That's a very good question.
106.
It wasn't there. No. I don't even know what it is.
I thought you were going to come up.
What's that?
I thought you were going to come up. Is this in the large budget book?
It's in the budget section. Yeah, it's in the big budget book, in the budget section. 106.
At the top, art acquisition.
Art acquisition, maintenance.
It's a fifth line.
Hey, where's the 45 even from last year?
I'm not sure. I'll have to check.
It's your $30,000.
Because you didn't do 45 last year.
That's a very good point. I have no idea, but it was budgeted for last year as well.
What did we spend last year?
Well, the revised budget's 45.
Let me take a look at the...
Well, does this have to do with the bases, putting in the art pieces, and then some of them...
Yes, but I don't know why it would be that much of an increase. It was a crane, wasn't it?
You got a lot of art pieces. That's right. Dropping the crane in the water. I know you did. I know you did.
Maybe we can just check on it. You'll probably find it.
Because I noticed it. I know it's all pretty low. So I didn't give it a second thought until I knew where it's at.
You want to pay it back out of this $45,000?
No.
Put it in economic development.
Mayor, members of the council, I'm sorry, I don't have a, I guess it's on page 12 of...
Big book?
I think it's $12,500. $12,500.
Yeah, I thought it was low. I saw it somewhere low.
Yeah, that's what confused me. It's on page 12 in community service section, not in the budget, but in the line item handout. I believe it's $12,500.
So maybe it's just a...
I'm sorry, yeah, those will be totally adjusted. We'll go back through and make sure, but I think it's $12,500 for the record.
Which is still a 40% from last year.
$6,900, I believe, was...
77 last year? Or, I'm sorry, two years ago. 13, 14, you're showing, you're saying it was what, $12,000?
If it's the right one, I think, yes, you're correct.
So actually, more than a 50% increase.
Well, it shows 81, 81%. Remember, we keep getting art every day.
Yeah, seems like it. We just, we just got one today.
The other thing, it, we tend to run a little short sometimes because of the number of art pieces, and we really have no idea 18 months in advance what will transpire over the next year and a half. I can also tell you that the bases have become more costly. They're small, it's difficult to get contractors to come out and do it, and the cost has increased significantly. So that's at least part of that expense.
But again, relative to what we're receiving, spending $12,000 for the artwork that we have is a pretty good investment.
Yeah, and the way it's set up now is, we, if, just a reminder, we can acquire arts of pieces two ways. One is a donated piece, and if somebody donates the piece under a public art master plan, the town covers the cost of that base. If they do a general fundraising campaign, then the campaign needs to cover that. So that's a little bit why we built some extra funds in there. Again, it won't be used if we don't need to use it.
Is the insurance in that for the art?
I believe insurance is carried under the town's general liability policy, it's not specifically under the art fund, if I'm correct.
Right. And I think, I'm not, I don't remember, but I know we had to redo some of the pieces, didn't we?
Yeah, we had to touch up some of the bases. We've also, you may have noticed, in the Centennial Circle, we actually have used the concrete stain to kind of give the bases a little bit more character. And when you pour concrete, as many of you know, to try to match the colors is just next to impossible. So we found it by, at least where we had a lot of them together in one spot, like in that location, and we wanted to keep that color palette the same, is why we went to the stain. And we've had to restain some of those, those funds, again, were used to do that.
Okay. All right, so can you...
Just one more little...
Yes.
On page 120, and Ken, this is just a little, in the budget, the main budget section, the big book.
120.
So all I have is the big book. Maybe put the presiding judge's name in, now that we have one.
Yes, those will be adjusted.
And then, under the town prosecutor, maybe put Mark's name in, as long as, you know, it was personalized on all the other, with his law firm, just to keep it consistent.
Good point.
Okay. All right, is that it? Anything else?
Rehash.
To rehash?
I'm going forward, is that there were two more meetings that were, if necessary. I'm assuming that there's not a need for tomorrow night, nor Wednesday night's budget meeting, and that $44,807,389 is the tentative budget number, with the modification of what we did with the 1% COLA, 1% 1.5% merit.
Good. Okay, that's the direction.
Got it.
Do you would like to come tomorrow evening?
I don't have a life, I'll be happy to come down again.
Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? We're adjourned.